So that is the bulk of my report. So I know that was rather long, but I know if people are gonna tune in and watch things, we want to make sure we're giving them that information.
Okay. Thank you very much for that. Kyle? Next item on the agenda is questions and comments from people in attendance. And there is no one wishes to address the board. So we move on. You consented to attend. Number seven. Seek a motion to approve the minutes at the past meeting, June 10th and June 18th.
Someone.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? Are you now all those in favor of the motion? Say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carried. Number eight. Consider approval of financial reports. Is there any gifts?
No gifts, just a budget revision that was done to reflect the donations that I referred on last month to families, other families, Math Day donations, the Dream Library donations. We will recognize those donations next month. I talked with Megan Palmer about doing a little bit more than me just telling her because there's a lot of good things that they're doing and it would be nice for her to do that. And so there was just a budget revision to Plan 21 to reflect all those donations.
Is there a motion to approve financial report?
Second.
Motion in a second. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Say nay. Motion carried. No unfinished business tonight, so we move on to new business. Consider approval of the declaration and parent notice of district's student academic standards.
One of the interesting things in state law is the board has to approve this particular public notice. These are the standards adopted by the state of Wisconsin, Department of Public Instruction, that we have based all of our curriculum decisions on in terms of where we're headed with math, reading and writing, science, and geography and history. And that's specifically what the legislation says, is we have to reaffirm these every year. So this has actually been noticed here, the standards, the English, just for a note, the English standards, the reading and writing, have changed a bit. The state has just adopted new standards. And so those have changed. So we're looking at making sure that we're covering everything that we need to.
Make a motion to approve a declaration and parent notice of district students' academic standards.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Say nay. Motion carried. Number 10. Consider approval of administrative support contracts.
I'd recommend your approval of the contracts for Lisa Miller, Sanat Alau, and Kathy Guzzi for this next year. We'll move.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Say nay. Motion carried. Number 11. Review proposal of teachers on call as a service to assist with recruiting, assigning, training, and retaining substitutes.
So this one won't be as long, so you don't, yeah. So each year, we struggle to find substitutes. And it is, at times, increasingly difficult. I think this year could be especially difficult. Because, saying this gently, some of our substitutes are veterans of the teaching profession and may not feel that they want to be back in the building. And so, you know, as we have struggled to get substitutes and find substitutes, there are other solutions than what we've been doing. And we do actively recruit each year, and what's interesting is when it seems like we get a new substitute on, we hire them, or they're gone. There's times when it seems like it's a revolving door. This is a service that's provided to quite a few different school districts in the state. It's a service called Teachers on Call. Wisconsin Rapids uses ASOP, which is a different service.
You don't like it?
Oh, my God. So what the service provides is, they are basically the employer of the teacher, who is the substitute. They pay the wage, they pay the rollups, so all of the FICA, the Social Security, all of those pieces, they're paid back. They do the trainings. And then they find and help recruit substitutes for you. They also do the scheduling. And I should say this, what scheduling they do is, they do the, if there's advanced notice scheduling. If a teacher goes home sick in the middle of the day, they probably, they can't really deal with that. We still have to do that internally, but they do deal with the advanced work scheduling and trying to get that straightened out. Just highlight a couple of the areas. One of the things, knowing that we have UWSP nearby and whatnot, is they would look to recruit out of UWSP or grad, recent graduates from UWSP. So the things that I told you is, you know, they're doing the training, they're hiring, they're filling the absences. This is more of their nationwide stats. I believe, what is it, eighty-some schools in Wisconsin? So they do all the payroll administration, payroll taxes, benefits. They work on the HR issues. Unemployment goes through them. I don't know if you know this, but substitute teacher can apply up for unemployment. And we've had that happen.
I would assume that that'd be a long process of, for them to qualify.
Nope.
Did you hear a long time? That they had so much time.
I'm sure there's a calculation that they, you know.
Pay or your unemployment.
Depending how much they were hired by us and within a certain time frame, that's the calculation, yes.
They deal with the Affordable Care Act piece, the recruiting, the background checking. And again, we do get some, we do get some say in the process, so, you know, we work with them if there's an issue or if we have recommendations for substitutes.
Yeah.
So the other thing is, the way the scheduling works, teachers can actually request substitutes in the scheduling. So if you know you're gonna be absent for workshop, whatever, medical appointment, whatever, the teacher can request the substitute. So the cost of this service is, so we currently pay our substitutes $100. The cost is, to us, would become $128.50. So it's basically $28.50 per sub. Now, some of that, keep in mind, we pay 100, and that's our flat rate that we pay, but then we also have to pay the FICA and all that. And then we also do pay a sub manager. So we do have those added costs, that the $128.50 might be a bit of a premium, but it's, a lot of that actually gets eaten up between the FICA and probably our sub management cost.
Save money on $128.50, $100, no additional cost.
Well, and I can tell you, we would save money on a scenario that we've, that we tried to solve internally the last couple of years. So we did have a substitute who was a former teacher, who could only work for us, what was it, 800 hours? Let's see, it's about eight, what is it about Kathy, buddy? 100 hours?
It went through CISA, then, right?
So then what we did, so then what we did was, when she would get to the hours with us, we actually had, we contracted CISA. And so CISA basically then hired her and paid her and did all that, and we just paid for that service from CISA. CISA's markup was $50.
I was suggesting that $128.50 is going to actually be cheaper than paying $100 in administrative.
Yep. And that's, at the end of the day.
Cost and so forth, because your, your law costs without administrative on that is about $10, $115.
Yep. So I'm bringing this to you more for just you to look at tonight versus making a final decision on. So we're working with, this was brought to us, both us and Nacusa at the same time. So I'm working with the Nacusa district with the negotiation side of that, to see what, if we can negotiate anything else out of that in terms of trying to keep our costs as low as possible.
Wouldn't we, as a district, have more, say, of the scheduling piece of it originally?
What do you mean?
How do they schedule? I mean.
Probably like, there's some subs that, like particularly, like elementary, or they've got a chemistry background, or we have.
They'll be in their profile.
And that's all in their profile?
Yeah.
Or are you talking about, like?
Hundred.
Or preference. Like be a long-term subs that we're already looking for.
When it comes from us originally, then we need to.
Yeah, it comes from us, yeah.
There'll be, yeah, once they get a system set up, and then we'll have access to it, teachers will have access to it.
Yeah.
So putting their dates off there.
Nacusa used to use ASOP.
Call it.
As a train rep.
Yeah.
That's part of the reason I quit sending.
This one has been run by, so it's actually run by a company that specializes in this world of temporary help, so to speak, Kelly Services.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I can't speak to this particular firm, but I have, I don't know, however many, I don't remember when Nacusa started using that, but I worked with ASOP for probably three or four years. And the, there wasn't, there wasn't a way to, I preferred to do pre-planned. If somebody was gonna be gone for a conference in a week, I'd like to know ahead of time. I don't want to get called at five o'clock in the morning.
Yep.
And that never happened.
If you.
I wanted to work in subject areas where I had expertise, and that didn't happen.
And that is something we, I think, we would want to make sure is, that the system does that, because we do have a lot of that with a lot of our subs.
I had teachers that I worked with who requested me, and ended up with somebody else. You know, it just kept, it kept snowballing, and it kept multiplying, and finally, finally a couple of other factors I just said, I said, okay, I've done this for nine or 10 years, that's long enough.
So we have done some legwork on the, on the end of talking with administrators from other districts, and so far it's been a positive response.
So if you commit to this or frequent to this, are there any subs that we currently use that you could still use outside of this program, or would you either want to, or would they?
Yeah, so, like a long-term sub, we typically advertise for those like we'd advertise to hire a teacher.
Fair.
And so we may still want to do that, that way. But at the end of the day, it still might make more sense to run it through this system. But that's something we would have to.
Question, if you had, you know, and I honestly, I guess I don't, I don't really pay attention to who all the subs are, but, I mean, I'm assuming there's a number of people that have subs here for years and years and years, maybe I'm wrong, but that just like to come in and that you guys enjoy, or whatever.
Yep.
If you just don't have enough of those people, you know, do they need to, you know, be then contracted by this company to use them, or do you just use them anyway?
In conjunction. It might be, it might be a combination of the both. And the reason I say that is, especially.
But if you sign up with them, they don't, they just not a, all your subs got.
Does this give you?
Yeah, yeah, no. So I would see it as kind of a combination of the two, and the reason I say that is, they're only really gonna be working on the pre-planned stuff, or the night before stuff, you know, I'm sick, I can't go in tomorrow. There's a certain cutoff where that's then out of their realm.
Right.
So that's, you know, some of the area we still can do that.
Just they do support.
They do support staff as well. The one thing we've, we've really run into is, we're seeing it more and more, is going without. And so we're looking at this as a solution to maybe solve some of that issue. Like, we've, Donna's filled in, I filled in, Jen Morris filled in.
What do they do if they can't find a sub? It's just kind of like what we, so that.
I kind of think that if you have some forewarning, that they pretty much say they will find a sub, just kind of.
And I think that's their goal, is, is to, their goal is to solve that dilemma for us, solve that dilemma.
I would look at this, the biggest advantage of this being that they pull a much larger pool of help.
Yeah.
Than the individual school district A, B, or C, even if there's a little district, a medium district, or a big district that you have, that Nacusa or Port.
Yeah.
You're gonna, you're gonna pull a, hopefully, hopefully, they're going to recruit and retain qualified staff that can come in and do this. And then, I'm assuming that the client districts, and the person of the principals and the district administrators can evaluate the subs that get sent, and if the person is a nitwit, you don't want them back. I mean, having, having a person who is not capable, and I'm trying to phrase this carefully, is 10 times worse than having somebody just fill in. I mean, if you show up in the room and the eager little model citizens are piling up the furniture, looking for matches, well then, things have not gone well, and it takes a while to straighten that out. So, you know.
That, that's true. There's no doubt. I stopped hiring, I just bear it, because it screws up more shit in my office than anything.
The sub price is pretty much the same all over, I mean, $100.
We're now starting to fall. The other thing is, we're gonna have to, we will have to look at this going into the school year, that might be a cost bump for us, and I would say because Rapids is $120 now?
At least.
Nacusa and Port were the same at the moment, but I know Pittsville is more, Rapids is significantly more now.
That's gonna be a bigger factor. And this is important of the factors.
And is Rapids still using ASOP?
Yes.
And the other.
Shame that, shame that all three districts can't coordinate on the same.
That's, that's the, that's the hope down the road, is that, and that's why we're looking at this as, with, with Nacusa, you know, if, if we both did that, that just widens the pool.
Yeah.
So, you know, so by going in with Nacusa, it widens.
I think it sounds like a good idea.
It's what you almost have to do nowadays. And in fairness to ASOP, my experience with them was several years back, so maybe they've, they've done a better job, but they certainly weren't managing too well what I worked with.
We can't, you bring us back a motion in next month? We can't make motion on that anyway?
How do we have this written? I said, review it.
We can't put a motion on it.
Yeah. And that's, because we don't have the final cost, and that's why I didn't put that on there, because there is some, there is a setup fee, the one-time, first-year setup. So what we're, what we're doing is, we're hoping to negotiate that cost out. It might be something I would ask, depending on how quickly they need to get moving, that I might bring that to you and say, would you be willing to do a short session at an evening to approve it?
At the surface, it definitely looks like it's a viable thing.
Yep.
All right. Moving on to number 12.
12?
10.
10.
John is really wanting to get out of here, huh?
You were off in the last one.
We just did 11.
We just did nine.
No, we didn't. Nine is academic standards.
He's got a different one.
I got a different.
Number 10.
How did it go?
Yeah, I picked this up from over there.
Mine says number nine.
Well, we're gonna consider the approval of 6603, right? Cooperative agreement with Wisconsin Rapids Public Schools.
Yeah, that's what I, that's what I've got next.
And those are all 4K students?
No.
Oh.
These are virtual.
Okay. All right.
And none of that, none of that's a, supplies, these are.
They're gone.
Yeah.
Well, I'll move to approve the 6603.
I will second it.
Rapids School District. Motion in a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Say nay. Motion is approved.
They are for kids, I'm sorry.
Okay, moving on to consider approval of Nacusa Port Edwards Early Childhood, 6603 01 Cooperative Agreement.
So we utilize, we utilize Nacusa early childhood services for our special education for 4K students and younger students identified with needs. We ran into a problem with the program last year, where basically, they came, we went with another student mid-year, and they said, we're full. We knocked on the other neighboring district's door, and they said, we're full. But in what had been, just some maybe professional courtesies over the years, that had never been an issue. And now we have a student, we have the service, and we don't have the staff to service that student, nor do we have a program that's accepting the student. So with some discussion with Nacusa, the bottom line was, we were at the point where, Nacusa was at the point where they basically said, well, you know, we'd have to hire more staff and bring those staff on, and said, doing the 6603 doesn't really, that's not a, doesn't work on the fiscal side, because the 6603 with that one student isn't enough to make up for the difference of bringing more staff on board. So after we discussed it, we, the discussion basically revolved around, if we're really gonna do this and have a partnership 6603 where, where our early childhood identified students are attending the programs in Nacusa because they have the services, let's truly co-op it then. Let's make it a true co-op, where we're equally, we're equally in this, so that denial of a student isn't a factor down the road. That if, if we come to the point where enrollment's gotten up to the point where the staff have to be hired, the burden will just be shared across the board per student then. Because we were really, I'm gonna tell you, our back was against the wall on that one, because we were looking at a situation where we were suddenly gonna be denying a student services, and then on the hook to provide compensatory services, which is a whole different ballgame. And we did not, we really did not want to go down that path. So the system that's in front of you is meant to be more of an equal partnership system versus the individualized 6603s. We'll still have those agreements at the end of the day, so we all know what students are wearing and whatnot, but this really co-ops the whole system so that it's, that it's a shared cost, and it's per student. So if, if we don't have a student there, and we've had years, well then our cost per student is nothing at that point.
If this is truly a shared agreement, and enrollment in district A or district B goes up or down, is it conceivable that, for example, if we were in this arrangement with Nacusa, and we were to suddenly acquire X number of students qualifying for a program, and we would opt to hire a staff member to service them here, that Nacusa would assist with that cost, potentially for them sending people to our district?
I don't foresee that situation, but I, I don't foresee that being that way, because our numbers will fluctuate, we will, we will, this last year was an awkward year with the, with the early childhood. We had a big early childhood group, but I think two years before that, we had one.
Okay. I just wondered, how much of a truly shared agreement is it? I mean, we've been sending people in these.
No, they're, this is, they're providing the service, and it's.
They have a program, and we send it to them.
But the, it's, the cost is shared per student. So that's what it is, though. And it allows us not to be locked out of, locked out when we have a student who's qualified. It basically solves the issue where we're not getting locked out.
Sure.
Make a motion to approve Nacusa Port Edward Early Childhood 6603.01 Cooperative Agreement.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Say nay. Motion carried. Next item on the agenda is consider approval of WIA annual renewal.
This is just the annual renewal for the WIA. Pro forma, it's kind of like the, the notice to parents, it's just, it's all that it is.
And we don't pay anything.
We do not pay anything to be a member of the WIA at this time.
I move that we approve that.
Second.
Motion in a second. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion is approved. Next item, opportunity for individual board member comment. Kathy.
I'd just like to compliment the custodial stamp for how beautiful grounds look, because we've got both a high school and elementary school. The ladder garden out here is beautiful, and all of the plantings at the high school look really nice. You know, we've been working hard on it.
Obviously, then, over what Kathy said, just before I came here, I saw a, a hit on my email from the DPI. They're starting to announce the various stages of the opening guidelines, and if parents and kids in K-12 education are really interested in keeping track of what's going on, they need to not only consult with the local district, but with the stuff coming out of Addison, because it's changing literally by the day. I really, you guys have done a fantastic job in terms of trying to swim upstream, and...
Pro forma, it's kind of like the, the notice to parents, it's just, it's all that it is?
And we don't pay anything.
We do not pay anything to be a member of the WA at this time.
I move that we approve that.
Second. Motion and a second. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion is approved. Next item, opportunity for individual board member comment. Kathy.
I'd just like to compliment the custodial staff for how beautiful all the grounds look, at both the high school and elementary school. The ladder garden out here is beautiful, and all of the plantings at the high school look really nice, you know, we've been working hard on it.
Obviously, I don't know what Kathy said, just before I came here, I saw a, a hit on my email from the, the DPI, they're starting to announce the various stages of the opening guidelines, and if parents and kids in, in K-12 education are really interested in keeping track of what's going on, they, they need to not only consult with their local district, but with the stuff coming out of Madison, because it's changing little by the day. I, I really, you guys have done a fantastic job in terms of trying to, to swim upstream, and I, I, I hope, I hope it all works, but there's a lot more coming, and I, I just hope everybody does a good job of keeping track of that, especially in, in Madison. We just have to do our best.
So, as we go forward, I hope, does that bring everybody back to, back to school in the fall, whether we are a leader against maybe some of the other school districts in our area or around the state, I would hope that we can figure out a way to bring these kids back to school, because it's pertinent, very pertinent for these young minds to be in front of the teachers. So whatever we have to do as a district to lead by example and show others that we can overcome and achieve. And the school looks great.
A lot of good points, a lot of good things going on, you know, Kyle Lynch, you know, got some kids out there doing some running, getting them out of the house, getting, you know, small groups being very cautious to do, so, good for that, school's looking awesome, so, you know, when the kids come back, it'll be a new look for them, so that should not bring some more enlightenment to them when they come in this building. The last thing is, one of our staff members was in a flood accident this weekend, I just want to wish her and the family the best they can as they go through this rough time.
Yeah, I'd just like to thank the administrators and staff and all, everybody on the working groups that have been working on the reopening plan. A lot of hard work so far, and a lot of hard work coming up, continuing, and looking forward to graduation.
I trust we're going to be given updates concerning what we're doing and where we're doing it.
Hopefully tonight or tomorrow morning.
Good.
That's, that's for this week.
You do have the dates down though, right? The August date.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
All right. That's all I have. Next item was establish future board meetings. Our next board meeting is August twelfth. I was in fact earlier.
Twenty-twenty.
Twenty-one, yes. And September is September ninth. So, we'll just go with those two for now? So our next item is first reading and policy update.
Well, we'll get ourselves converted to do that once again.